The items because the person who is Paula Kokosa, and I'm sorry if I'm saying that wrong, who was a nominee for Fair TV Commission, she's on the supplemental warning, which would be the last item, so rather than have her wait, I'm going to move that up to this, to right now. So this is item 12 from the supplemental warning, to hear, consider, and act upon the following appointment to the Fair TV Commission as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Paula Kokosa, Democrat, 251 Inwood Road, term July 2021 to 2024. So first, can I have a motion to approve this item?
Pardon me, Madam Moderator, I think first you need a motion to take the item out of order.
Okay, can I have a motion to take the item out of order?
So moved.
Representative Seibert, second Representative Georgiades, all in favor of that issue?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve? Ms. Kokosa, are you on the call? Hopefully, yes, I see you. You can unmute yourself. Looks like you're muted.
There, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, thank you for joining us.
Hi, thanks for having me.
Sure, so first, if you just don't mind briefly telling us, you know, why you want to be on the Fair TV Commission and your background, just really briefly, because we do have your resume, but, and then there might be questions for you possibly.
Sure, I'm excited to be part of the Fair TV Commission. I'm a journalist, and before leaving the field to be a full-time mom, I worked as a news producer at the ABC affiliates in New Haven, Connecticut, Atlanta, New York, and then I also worked for the NBC affiliate in New York. Having received my master's degree a couple of years ago from Sacred Heart University in media literacy and social justice, I feel like my combined education and my experience makes me a good candidate to bring a beneficial service to the town of Fairfield. My husband and I moved here 17 years ago to raise our children, and this is actually the longest place that I've called home, and now I'm grateful for the opportunity to give back to the town I love.
That's great, thank you. Are there any questions for Paula? Representative Wolk, I think you had your hand up?
Thanks Karen, Jay Wolk, District 5. First of all, I want to thank you for volunteering to join the committee. I hear Mr. Quinn is no longer on the committee. He emailed me to say he's not going to go forward to be on the committee, but anyway, I'm glad you're joining. You know, Fair TV is, you know, it's all public TV, it's not, you know, I know you have a great background in TV, you know, in ABC and NBC, but as you know, Fair TV is like, you know, public TV is completely different as far as like rules and regulations and things like that, so it's glad, I'm happy you're joining. You know, I'm still waiting to hear whether Stu, your chairman, is still going to be on. I emailed him to see whether he's going to be still the chairman or still be on the board, so. But anyway, thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Mm-hmm, thanks.
Any other questions or comments or? Thank you for coming and talking to us, we're actually going to vote on it right now. All in favor of Ms. Kokosa, is that right?
Kokosa, yeah, that's right, yep.
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Okay, the motion passes, congratulations and thank you for volunteering.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thanks. Okay, the next item is, we'll go back to the agenda, item four, to consider and act upon the following reappointment to the Ethics Commission as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Brian S. Kanter, Democrat, 150 Curtis Terrace, term July 21 to 2023. Dana Carey, Republican, 7 Greenacre Lane, term July 2021 to 2023. Craig Van Steenbergen, Republican, 292 Riverside Drive, term July 2021 to 2023. May I have a motion to approve this item? Representative Iacono, and a second please, Representative Seibert. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, oh.
No, Lisa, Lisa Havy.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to split the applicants, please.
May I have a second? Representative Nickel. Okay, all in favor of this motion? I'm not sure I need to vote on this.
Aye.
Please say aye.
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 You don't have to vote on it, you just have to divide.
Yeah, thank you, okay. So we'll go through each candidate. The first candidate is Brian S. Kanter. So will, can we have a motion? Thank you, Cindy Param, Representative Param is moving to approve Brian Kanter. Can I have a second? Representative McDermott, any discussion on Mr. Kanter? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Okay, thank you, so Mr. Kanter is a yes. The next person is Dana Carey, can I have a motion to approve her candidacy? Representative Iacono, seconded by Representative Gale. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
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 Can you say who it is? I'm not sure if Betsy is getting, I'm not sure who it is, let's see, Alice Kelly, Lisa Havy.
Drew Georgiades.
Scott Nickel.
Matt Jacobs.
Matt Ambrose.
Matt Jacobs.
Jay Wolk.
Will Diaz.
Joe Seibert.
Joe Seibert.
Josh Garstoff.
I'm also a no, Josh.
Jay Wolk.
So I have Jay. I have Alice Kelly, Lisa Havy, Drew Georgiades, Scott Nickel, Matt Jacobs, Matt Ambrose, Jay Wolk, Will Diaz, Joe Seibert, Josh Garstoff, Karen Whackerman. Anybody else?
Lauren Beauvais.
Odenk.
Laura Carson, Lauren Beauvais.
And Meredith.
Meredith. Did you get all those, Betsy?
Yes, I'll say.
Okay, any extensions? Okay, so I don't, Betsy, how does, so maybe we need to call on, see who is in favor.
There are 13 noes.
I have 14 noes.
Oh, Sheriff Pistilli.
Oh, that's 15, I have then. Sharon, Meredith, Lauren Beauvais, Laura Carson, me, Garstoff, Seibert, Diaz, Wolk, Ambrose, Jacobs, Nickel, Georgiades, Havy, and Alice Kelly.
Madam Moderator?
Oh, you're not a no, Sharon, is that right?
Correct, I apologize, I was raising my hand so you could count the yeses, sorry.
Oh, okay. But Representative Spolier is a no, she's on the phone, I believe, so she's having trouble communicating. All right, let's, should we try that again?
I'll vote if you prefer.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So Bateson?
Yes. Yes.
Thanks, Amy O'Shea?
Yes.
Amy Roggerio?
Yes.
Bill Gerber?
Yes.
Karen McCormick?
Yes.
Cindy Param?
Yes.
Jeff Steele?
Yes.
Alex Durrell?
Yes.
Matt Jacobs?
No.
Scott Nickel?
No.
Sharon Pistilli?
Yes.
Laura Carson?
No.
Alice Kelly? Alice Kelly?
You're on mute, Alice.
No. Meredith Odenk?
No.
Marcy Spolier?
Yes.
Will Diaz?
No.
Josh Garstoff?
No.
Joe Seibert?
No.
Jay Wolk?
No.
Matt Ambrose?
No.
Hannah Gale?
Yes.
Lisa Havy?
No.
Jamisha Dunmore?
Yes.
Lauren Beauvais?
No.
Rock McDermott? Jill Vergara?
Yes.
Karen Whackerman?
No.
Frank Ferens? Pamela Iacono?
Yes.
Christine Messina?
Yes.
Pete Tolman?
Yes.
Drew Georgiades?
Yes, I mean, sorry, no, no.
Chrissy Kelly? Bill Perigini?
Yes.
Chrissy Kelly, yes, she's having trouble with autism.
Thank you.
Perigini's a guess as well.
Peter Britton?
Yes.
Kimberly Grant?
Yes.
And Frank Patisse?
Yes.
23 in favor, 14 no.
Thank you, Betsy. The motion passes for Dana Carey. The next individual is Craig Van Steenbergen, can I have a motion to approve his candidacy, his reappointment? Representative Nickel? And seconded by Representative Pistilli. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Any extension? Okay, that appointment passes as well, thank you. So that's all three. We have the items five, six, and eight were unanimously approved at the committee meeting, so we are able to deal with them as a consent item, consent calendar. So unless anyone objects, they'd like to have a motion to vote on these items together. Can I have a motion for that? Representative Garstoff, seconded by Representative Seibert. Is there any discussion on any of these items? This is five, which is the Neighborhood Assistance Act, six, the Community Development Block Grant, and eight, the Gould Manor Improvement. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any extensions? Okay, thank you, so those three pass unanimously. Then we'll move to item seven, to consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Resolved in accordance with a request from the WPCA, $144,388.43 and hereby is appropriated from the WPCA fund balance to complete the WCPA/WPCA portion of the microgrid project. Can I have a motion to approve this item? Representative Nickel, seconded by Representative Param. Is Mr., is Jared on the call, sorry, the CFO, I understand he may have?
Hi, Madam Moderator, this is Jared.
Hi Jared, how are you?
I'm good, how are you this evening?
Fine, thanks. I know you told me that you were, I had asked the question that Mr. Bateson asked, and you said you would address that at our meeting, so I'm hoping you can do that.
Yes, so, and the question that I got was regarding the fund balance of the WPCA and the amount in there as of today was $12.4 million. And that includes anything that has been authorized to date.
You mean you're excluding anything that's been authorized, or that's?
It's factored in. Anything that has been, has already been authorized, has been factored into that calculation.
Mr. Bateson, did you have any questions about that?
Yeah, Jared, can you clarify, what do you mean by factored in? The 12.4, that's all unencumbered?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Your question.
Thank you. Does anyone have, is there any other discussion? Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Schmidt before we turn to the vote? I don't think, see nobody raising their hand. Okay, so all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any extension? Okay, the motion passes unanimously, thank you. We'll move to item nine, to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Resolved that the town of Fairfield abandoned the remaining portion of the town-owned property, town-owned paper street known as Cherry Street, which intersects with King's Highway as shown on the attached map, reserving however an easement for sewer, the location and dimensions of which shall be as determined by the town engineer, which easement shall be recorded on land records of the town of Fairfield. Can I have a motion to approve this item? Representative Wolk, seconded by? Somebody is going to second it, Representative Alice Kelly, thank you. Is there any discussion on this item? Representative Vergara?
Thank you, Jill Vergara for District 7. I wanted to offer a motion to postpone this item until the next scheduled RTM meeting.
Is there a second? Representative Wolk is seconding. Would you like to address the reason for your motion?
Yes, and I don't know if this is appropriate, but I was hoping that Representative Iacono could second it, because it was supposed to be a bipartisan proposal, but.
Sure, I'm happy to do that, that's no problem, you have my support, Jill.
Okay, thank you, Pam. So I would like to postpone this, and I think it's an issue that not, that both of the property owners who will benefit from this aren't current in their taxes, so I, before we are going to hear this at the next meeting, I would like to make sure that the condition is met, that all taxes be up to date for all beneficiaries of this abandonment. And I'd also just like to make sure that all necessary, all property owners who could benefit will. So I was told that there's a third property owner who should be a party to this, and I would just like to make sure before we go ahead with all this, that there isn't a third party who should be included in these discussions. I was told that 2180 King's Highway is a possible beneficiary.
Okay, is there any further discussion? So the motion before us now is to postpone it. Mr. Johnson, let me, before I go to the public, let me just see if anyone on the RTM has any discussion, and we'll go to you. Is there any further discussion here in the RTM? The motion we're dealing with right now is to postpone. Representative Georgiades?
Through you, Madam Moderator, to Representative Vergara. So you're suggesting that the third potential beneficiary be notified and come speak to us as to the interest in participating in the, in this motion, or this situation, like if he wants to buy into the purchase of this property?
Well, they're not, there's no buying into it, but I do want to include that property owner in the discussions and just make sure that they're aware of it, and that if there's any benefit to receive, that they are included in it, and split equitably.
Okay, thank you, I agree. Representative Gerber? You're on mute, Bill.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I was wondering, is there anyone, is Jim Wenton tonight, or? Anyone else from zoning, or? Okay, I, I mean, I'll ask.
I spoke to Jim this week, Bill, what's your question? I might have asked him the same question.
So, my question is about, what was it, about a year ago, we got some answers when this first came up, about what the lots, the building sizes could be on the increased lot sizes. And the answers that he gave, that currently one lot could be 25,500 square feet, and with the abandonment, that could then be 26% larger, 32,035. The other one is currently maximum building size would be 20,250 square feet, and that could increase to 26,757, which is 32% larger. And so I just had a couple of questions. One is, with the easement, are those numbers still good? And also, I think with the easement, does that mean it's not possible to combine the two lots? I think that those are facts that we should know. And then the other question I had is, is there any precedent in town for abandonment of paper streets? Since the value increase, the appraised value is going to be substantially larger, if you can build 26% more and 32% more in the other one, that should increase the appraisal value substantially. Is there any mechanism by which the town or some, someone related to the town, or in some way realizing some value? Because it seems like a pretty big, a pretty big gift. I understand all the, you know, the potential benefits of it, but it would be nice to know why there's no, you know, compensation for that. And I think those are my main questions, and, you know, just pretty basic questions.
Madam Moderator, if I could address some of his questions. So when I spoke with Mr. Went this week, we did not address whether the property would be reassessed before the next revow. If that's one of your questions, I can't answer that. But I did speak to him about setbacks, and the setbacks would be maintained, they'd be the same as, you know, they wouldn't be smaller setbacks than normal. Also, the height issue, which was my concern, and he addressed it when he responded, because it's a larger property, they can't go higher. The height restriction stays the same. So whatever it is.
I'm not sure, yeah, so I'll ask these questions in an email, but I think we need to know, you know, I'd need to know before we vote. It's not really the setbacks, I think he's already said the buildings can be about 30, 30% larger in size, which by definition, you know, would make these significantly more valuable properties. And so, you know, the setbacks for a larger property, I think you're talking about, Drew, so.
Well, I'm talking about setbacks on the height, because that's what would impact the neighbors greatly.
Right.
I'm not talking about his profitability and how much money he's making, I'm concerned about the neighbors.
Right.
So I wanted, that's my question to him, so that's all I spoke to him about.
Okay, yeah, and I think, I think the town attorney should be asked whether there's any precedent for any sort of value provided to the town for that, because it's going to create significant value for the, for the property owners. I mean, should be very significant value, so. And the answer, my Gino.
Mr. Gerber, you'll send us.
It's just a question. Yes.
Go ahead.
Just on behalf of the town, I think we need to ask the question.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any other comments before I turn to Mr. Johnson? Okay, Mr. Johnson, would you like to speak?
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I just wanted to address, excuse me, a few points. Representative Vergara, Vergara said that there was a concern about the taxes on both property owners, and I just wanted to state that my taxes have been current, and as current as, as far back as I can remember, they're always current. So I think she was referring to the other property owner at 2230. And I just wanted to clear that up, and also state, is there a way to have this vote and just have the property not transfer until they are current? I spoke with them today, and they're planning on paying their taxes at the end of their fiscal year, which is July 31st. They realize they're current. But I'm not current, and is there a way to continue with the vote and just have it not transferable until their taxes are paid, number one. And number two, there was concern about, with this drainage easement, and I know there was original talk about, you know, the properties combining. I think the drainage easement and the fact that there won't be a structure at any point on, or can't be a structure over the drainage easement, that pretty much eliminates the possibility of combining, which as I've stated many, many, many times, there, I have, there's no intention and no thought of that whatsoever. And I believe that's it. Are there any other questions from me regarding this?
I know Representative Wolk, you had a comment, I don't know if that was for Mr. Johnson, but what would you like to say?
Oh, thanks Karen, I was gonna, anyway, Jay Wolk, District 5. Well, I don't really have a comment for Mr. Johnson, but what I was gonna say was, I'd like to hear from Bill Hurley, and see what he has to say over all of this. So that's my take and why I'm voting for postponement till the next meeting, just to hear what Bill has to say. Thanks, Karen.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any questions from Mr. Johnson, or any other comments on this motion, which is the sub-motion to postpone to the next meeting? Okay, so let's take a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Okay, so let's take a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, so we'll postpone this till the next meeting, which will be the end of July, unless that meeting is canceled, which is possible. But I know that Mr. Johnson is eager to get this done. The next item is item eleven. As the agenda says, I have referred amendments to the Harbor Management Ordinance to LNA, and we did consider that last week, so you'll be hearing about that very soon. And then, I think that we're done with that. The, that's right, the resolution, supporting, the resolution, the sense of the body resolution. Supporting the pollinator pathway effort has been withdrawn. I sent this around, just a short time ago, so some people may not have seen it. The Board of Selectmen actually approved the resolution just a few hours before we heard from them last week. So they decided to not spend more time on it with us, because they already have a resolution on behalf of the town that approves it. So that's been withdrawn. And that's it for the meeting, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Representative Diaz, seconded by Representative Gale. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye and bye.
Thanks very much.
Thanks Karen.
We'll see you next time, bye-bye. Thank you Karen.